Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. And committee of the whole meeting. The city council meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
All right. Here, Bruno.
Here.
Ruby.
Here.
Kilburg.
Here.
Casarag.
Here.
Maladra.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Pashke.
Here.
Swanson.
We begin our city council meetings with the pledge of allegiance. I would like to invite Ms. Dawkins, Mr. McCready, Chief Passerelli, Chief Antonori, Director Babica, Director Cruz, Director DeGroot, Director Timoshenko, to please lead us in the pledge.
In unison.
Yeah, one after the other, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item 3A, folks, is to proclaim May as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Geneva. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marx.
So moved.
Seconded by Mayor. We have some special guests with us. Do you want to say anything, Madam Chair?
Um, thank you.
Please, join us at the podium.
Well.
So, good to see you.
It's great to be here, and I won't take any time but to just say-
No, 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 you have guests as well, so be sure.
Say, "Thank you." Yes, two of the board members, Vice Chairperson Eleanor Hamilton and Member Gene Gaines is here this evening, and we are just thrilled that you are willing to give a proclamation-
Of course.
-for the month of May to be Mental Health Month. It is National Mental Health Month, and we're very grateful and thankful that the city and its leadership and the council supports mental health efforts.
We do.
And embrace it and-
And you wore a green shirt in honor.
I did. I, you know, came as close as I could to the lime green. But we're thrilled and thank you, and we did, you know, different collaboration things at the middle school and high school, and the students have embraced it, different leadership, peer leadership programs. So, the students and their sponsors, their teachers also are, do a ton of credit, and we're just happy that there's kind of a collaborative effort in town.
Absolutely, there is, absolutely. Now, are these some of the special guests who are with us tonight, or?
I don't know. Those special guests.
It's kind of, just kind of, I'm a little anxious, it's like-
Well, it is today's birthday.
Oh.
We're from Rosary High School, we have to sit in on a government meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, you've been punished, okay. That's great. Welcome.
Thank you.
So, thank you, very much.
One moment, I'm gonna, we have a motion from Marx, a seconded by Mayor. All in favor of the proclamation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. May we get a photo?
Sure.
With others as well, the whole group? Oh, you heard it?
Yes. Thank you.
And item 3B, folks, is to proclaim May as Historic Preservation Month in the city of Geneva. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by, I believe it was Pashke. Questions or comments? Is Mr. Lambert here this evening? He texted me earlier regarding some things we might do in the week of the 16th, I think it is?
You can have the air.
Okay, okay. Any comments or questions from the council? All in favor of the motion offered by Alder Person Bruno, seconded by Alder Person Pashke, please say aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Item 3C, and this is why I asked everybody to lead us in the pledge. It is consideration of the reappointment of city officials and the city attorney. They are, as a reminder, which of course is included in your packet, Ms. Dawkins, Mr. McCready, Chief Passerelli, Chief Antonori, Director Babica, Director Cruz, City Attorney Radovich, Director DeGroot, Director Timoshenko, and Jean Fornari as the deputy city clerk. I encourage, of course, unanimity on this, and I'm certain that everyone would echo my sentiments as well, without the professional dedication, subject matter expertise, and stewardship of this community. Without these directors, we would not be where we are. So, with that, I entertain a motion, a second. We will provide that to Alder Person Bowring, seconded by Alder Person Marx. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Congratulations. Watch, they all just leave right now, it's like, they're just like- The next item is to cancel school for rosary. So, just make sure you're paying attention. Item 4, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an a-, oh, forgive me. Alder Person Ruby.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure exactly when I should say this, but I would like to have item 7C polled from the omnibus agenda.
7C. Anyone else? On the amendments. Item 5 is the omnibus agenda as amended. All items marked with an asterisk can be considered by one motion, one second, and one vote. Is there such a motion? Motion by Casarag, seconded by Bowring. City clerk, please take the roll.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda has been approved by this council with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We jump down to item 7C, which has been removed off the consent agenda by Alder Person Ruby. The request is to acknowledge receipt of resolution and recommendations of the Joint Review Board created pursuant to Illinois Tax Increment Allocation Act for the Southeast Master Plan parenthetically to four redevelopment project areas. Is there a motion? Motion by Bowring, seconded by, I don't know, who the heck did that?
Marx.
Marx. Now, this matter is on the floor for discussion. I'm happy to recognize the Alder Person who asked for it to be removed. Alder Person Ruby.
Thank you. So, the JRB held a mandatory meeting for the TIF process at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, April 30th. Many residents took the initiative to be there, including some who had to take off work in order to attend a weekday morning meeting. There's no recording of the meeting, and minutes are unavailable until December, presumably long after our final vote. In the interest of transparency and good governance, I would like to give the public an opportunity to share their comments here, as well as for answers to be provided if possible. A few unanswered questions I'd like to know, although it was brought up and asked several times during the meeting. What are the negatives if this development doesn't pan out? Who will end up paying for this? What is the breakdown of the expenses in the TIF? There was no discussion on any of these items at the JRB, and no answers were provided. Not a single negative issue was ever discussed. Lack of conversation and a few random comments from the JRB representatives give me pause as to whether the people who voted actually reviewed the public record, planning documents, and draft ordinances per statutory requirements as written in the report. The publicly appointed official, whose selection process nor name can be found anywhere, asked the sole question of the entire meeting, which was, "I have heard about different options for this property. What will be built here?" Another member of the JRB referred to Administrator Dawkins as Madam Mayor. I'll be voting nay on acceptance of this report for these reasons. And is it appropriate for-
We will have public comment. I'll be happy to invite folks who wish them-
At the, okay, thank you.
Perhaps we can provide some additional elucidation with respect to the process-
Thank you.
...and some of the mischaracterizations there, too. We jump to item number 8, municipal bills for payment. Oh, yes, excuse me, on the vote of item 7C, is there a motion? We have a motion, we have a second. I believe the motion was Bowring, the second was Marx. City clerk, please take the roll.
One second, I'm sorry. When will the public be allowed to speak?
Under public comment.
Okay, so we have, all right, that's fine. Thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Allen Stain.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Deputy clerk, I believe it is seven votes in favor of, one against, one abstention, one absent. The matter has been accepted by this council. Item 8, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
All right. The bills total $2,750,761.37.
Mayor, I approve, I, we approve of paying the bills as read the individual items. The add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
There's a motion by Alder Person Bruno to pay the bills as presented, which are available in each council member's packet and available on the city's website. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Pashke. City clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, the
bills have been approved for payment. We jump to item number 10A. Consider ordinance number 2024-17 granting variations to, one, increase the total allowable lot coverage from 45% to 61.36%, and, two, reduce the side yard setback from six feet to 2.5 feet for a proposed rear yard deck at 501 North First Street. Bowring makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Pashke. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so the subject property is located in the R1 zoning district and is a non-conforming lot of record with substandard total lot area and frontage. In 2016, the previous owner remodeled the dwelling and constructed a new detached garage at the rear of the property. At the time of construction, the approved plan showed that the lot coverage for the site was at the maximum 45%. However, the existing lot coverage for the site has been determined to be 54.72%. The current owner is now requesting a lot coverage and setback variation to allow for a proposed deck that would be located on the southern side yard and rear yard of the property. The deck would increase the total lot coverage by 6.64%. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on April 11th, the commission unanimously recommended approval of the requested variations. With us this evening, we do have Director DeGroot, if you have any questions, and I'm not sure, are the applicants here as well?
I am.
Okay, and the applicant is here as well, if you have questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Questions for either Director DeGroot or the applicant, who looks very familiar. We just saw you tell it last week, didn't we?
The heart of City Hall, yeah.
Any questions at all from any member of the council? If not, we do have a motion by Bowring, we have a second by Pashke. City clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, ordinance 2024-17 has been approved. Thank you. We have public comment, folks, of the city council meeting. Those who wish to speak before the council can do so. As a reminder, as is also stipulated in our agenda and on our agenda, this is an opportunity for you to speak, the council to listen. There will be no debate, there will be no discussion. The floor is open. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Al Sandrock. I currently reside on the east side of the river myself.
I have.
My concern is about the TIF that Alderman Huber, Hugh, Hugh, Hugh brought up. I understand that this is coming at a cost of $185 million in bonds, and I understand how this TIF is working in terms of, in theory, paying back as it comes in. But my concern is, is the money well spent towards these warehouses that are coming up that, to me, it seems like aren't being occupied? I mean, are those taxes going to be coming back where it's not falling back on the taxpayers ourselves? I think it's come upon, at least to the residents, as a very sudden thing that I think we all need to be a little bit more aware of, of, because this could all have very negative effects on the taxpayers, and with the inflation as the economy has been going, I think another burden on the taxpayer could be really detrimental. And not only to mention that, coming into this town, coming in from 38 State Street and Kirk Road, it's kind of a gateway, and do we really want to see more warehouses coming into this town that offers so much of a great downtown experience that we have? I just want to have the money go to where I know we can get a return and keep that good Geneva experience, you know, in the heart of what we, what we're used to. That's all I have to say on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Rasmann. I live on Lexington Drive. First, I want to say a very big kudos to the Geneva Fire Department about a few weeks ago. Some of you might remember waking up to an incredibly, exceptionally foul smell on the east side of Geneva, and so we went to Facebook and started asking questions, and everyone said, "Oh, my gosh, we thought something was really, like someone died in our front yard." And so I emailed through Facebook a message directly to the city, and about two hours later, I had six fire department members at my door saying good morning and letting me know that everything was okay, and so I just want to say, that was like more responsive than I could have ever hoped for, to reassure me that we weren't going crazy. So, I'll say that first. Secondly, I'll say, I appreciate the service that all of you bring to this community. I work with a lot of governments, city councils, county commissioners, and so forth. It's not an easy job. It's not an easy job being a civic participant, although I appreciate that we have the opportunity to be civic participants. We appreciate your patience as you listen, and I recognize and appreciate that you say that you're here to listen. As a resident of 18 years of the east side, I quite frankly am waiting for the day for the full city council to listen to us. I came here before with the big Amazon project. I'm kind of hard to miss. I'm not too shy about setting up to a microphone. I've been asking the city council to really think about the kind of development, and I get the strategic plan, it's referenced often. There are things in that strategic plan that are not being addressed. Affordable housing is one of them, and I wish there was a day that affordable housing could be synonymous with edible food. We are looking at projects in this community. It'd be very difficult for me to say, the TIF is one issue, the TIF 4 is one issue, and then the Venture Park and this other development is another issue. They are connected. If they are part of strategic plan, they're connected. As far as the TIF is concerned, Becky, I want to thank you for bringing it up. I was at that meeting, took off busy week, day. It was a special meeting that was called, and I would have to believe that the city is far more organized than just planning special meetings that pop up on the calendar at 4:29 on a Thursday evening, and then it's that next Tuesday morning at 10:00 a.m. I believe that this city council would be very well-served looking at your own website and seeing if you search "TIF 4" what you'll find. Your search will come up with nothing. If you go to TIF, you'll get the TIF page, and you'll see lists of other TIF projects, but not TIF 4. If you are here to serve all of Geneva, my recommendation is, I recognize we have a public meeting on June 3rd, it will be during the day or in the evening for people to come and participate. Once again, you will say you are here to listen. You might answer questions at that one, I'm not sure the structure is different. I am recommending, there is no mad rush for this unless there's something else we don't know about. Take the time, put together some open community sessions with a very comprehensive PowerPoint, oh, my goodness, we've all become experts on TIFs, but the reality is, they're not all the same. This is a bigger endeavor than this city has ever taken on. Your threshold before was $2.6 million, I believe is the number. This is $185 million transaction when all, when all is said and done. We're just asking you to have the respect, to educate, take the time, don't post meetings for special things that we have to try and dig and find and research ourselves. If you want collaboration and cooperation with your community, these are some of the things that you can do. Thank you for listening tonight.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Pat Dickinson, 619 Chandler. I have 25-year resident of Geneva. Just learned of this the last few days, and it was part of the Amazon initiative, and I do appreciate the end result in that matter as well. And also Geneva East, I've seen 25 years of development, Kirk Road, Route 38, and understand, when I moved out here, what attracted me, I'm an east coast guy from Boston, Mass, was it reminded me of New England. Now, I feel a little bit more closer to Chicagoland, and I might as well live in Elmhurst or closer, that, you know, not, not to dwell on that, but development happens, and development comes. I'm getting older, watched PBS here tonight, two-hour documentary on the Love's Canal, New York, where they stressed how the community was not listened to in that matter. If you're not old enough, that was 25, 30, 40, 50 years, late 70s. And I was younger then, high school-ish, and I didn't pay attention at the time, but I get that sense of frustration that's happening in our community, whether right or wrong the bureaucrats and the officials and everybody, you know, did their part, scientists spoke to things, and there was just a lack of communication for whatever reason. Walking up Geneva East, Geneva Drive, or off of East Side Drive, I have a dog, I can smell Fona, strawberry, blueberry, their food chemical smells good. I've been smelling it for 10 years, or noticing it anyways, as I get older, but now I worry about what's in that smell after this two-hour documentary and the warehouse increase that are empty for now, but who knows what's coming, especially trucks. Understand there was an initiative perhaps for a truck gas station in that kind of area, general area, that did not succeed. So, my comment tonight briefly is just simply that, is we're a small community still, that's the attraction of Geneva, and it's feeling less and less like that, at least east of the river, in my opinion, that I don't think I would move here today as a non-Illinois originally. And I'm just saying that not angrily or anything, and understand it procedurally, I'm sure everything is being handled appropriately, and the website is very difficult, like, you click on the development page, and it, it looks wonderful, but it, you know, and I'm, I'm not a, I'm not an illiterate computer person, it's, it's a battle, and you do give up trying to find out what is the latest and greatest on any initiative within any matter of the city of Geneva. Greatly appreciate your efforts, and especially volunteering, as everyone else does, but I do feel like there's a pace of, of, of business that no longer has the opportunity, for whatever reason, procedurally, including these meetings, that you're excellent, you've run this for many decades potentially, but it's fast and furious, especially for kids from high school to keep up with, never mind those of us who've been part of it for the last few years. So, I echo the frustration, not conspiracy of you or anyone in that matter, but we do feel that we're not being listened to, and I don't know the solution to it, but I do know that what's happening east of the river is not inviting to Geneva, Illinois, and I ask that perhaps consider that in the months and years ahead, not just the TIF initiative, but something is going wrong that is not making Geneva as attractive as it was to me 25 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Floor is open. Anyone else?
Thank you very much. My name is John Dashner. I live on the east side as well, and have been a resident of Geneva for plus 30 years, actually, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. I have some very specific questions regarding the TIF district that I hope you as council people will take the time to ask the city staff to investigate, to amplify, and to provide answers to the people who are going to be affected. It's not just the east side that's going to be affected by the TIF district. Of course, schools are going to be affected, you have the west side is going to be affected. It's going to be a whole community event, and I really hope that some of these questions are provocative enough that you will at least take time to ask your city officials to amplify on them and give them some due course. One of the important elements of a TIF district is the concept of "but if," and never have the, in the, in the joint review board meeting, the "but if" question was never really answered, and it's an important question to be answered. And how city occurs and amplifies and answers the "but if" question is fundamental to the success or failure of the TIF district. So, it's important to understand what that answer is, what the criteria is that they're using to say, "If we don't do this TIF district, this development won't happen." When you look at all the other developments that you see that are popping up on the, on the east side, on Thursday of this week, we're going to have another planning and zoning meeting for a regurgitation of the Venture Park. Are they included in the TIF district as well? Doesn't seem like they are. Seems like they're occurring and wanting to develop regardless of the TIF district. Second point that I need to make is, in the minutes of the last meeting that the director, I'm going to butcher her name, and I really apologize, Teresenko?
Timoshenko.
There you go, perfect. Thank you, Kevin. The, the director made it a point to indicate that it was a public-private partnership. Now, in that public-private partnership, it was important to note that it was a combination of revenues that would sustain this TIF district. She delineated three or four different items, private equity, debt, electric enterprise funds, TIF monies, the rebuilding Illinois funds, and then finally, a reduced development fees that are going to be attached to the developer. My question is, how much private equity is this particular developer, this MIF, going to bring to the table for us relative to our ponying up the TIF monies? That's number one. Number two, I would ask that city staff would provide a breakdown of how those monies are going to be created, are going to be spent, how those income streams are going to be put together to make the TIF district work. It wasn't provided. It wasn't provided at the tax review board meeting. Nothing was discussed on it. How much are we going to reduce the development fees by? Is that fair to the other developers that are occurring in our city? I don't know. That's an answer that you folks are going to have to answer. Another point is, and I think it was brought up previously, if you look at this, at the TIF district on the website, you see about nine different success stories that the city has put together. All total, $2.6 million, and about, I don't know, 90, 100 jobs, apparently, pardon me, 200 jobs. Out of those 200 jobs, of course, we don't know how many are part-time, how many are full-time, it isn't broken down, but the point being is, is that all of a sudden, we're going from 2.9, I'll give you 3 million, and now, all of a sudden, we're looking at a TIF district that's going to be 185 at the top end. Now, as Administrator Dawkins points out, 185 is the top end of that particular TIF district, so we don't know what really that value is going to be. It's an important question, and I really need to understand how it is you're going to ramp up the oversight going from $2.93 million up to a total of 185 million. It's just not clear, and I think those are questions that you as city fathers and administrators are going to have to answer. Another question that pops into my mind is, of course, is this developer going to be using the TIF district nomenclature and, you know, designation as a means of financing his particular development? If he doesn't get it, is he still going to develop the property? I don't know. It's not answered. It certainly is something that I think you folks need to ask. We can all agree, there is a lot of misinformation about TIFs. Some people like them, some people don't. There's quite a bit in an array of studies. There's a bunch of people from University of Illinois in Chicago that have done a lot of extensive studying on the TIF district relative to Chicago and its outlying areas. One thing that we can all agree upon is- One thing that we can all agree upon is, is the point of a TIF district is to increase the tax revenues for the town. Now, this is a fundamental point, I think. The city staff suggests that the current EUV, or, you know, the current evaluation is coming in at about 600-plus thousand dollars. They say in their report that it's going to raise up to 116 million dollars at the end of the 23-year TIF period. Now, the question that I have to ask is, is a cumulative 118, 116 million dollars? How much is every year? Because if you look at the reports and look at the studies from the UIC of Chicago, you'll see an increase in the development time, and then it slides off. I think you guys need to understand and you need to evaluate a year-by-year process by which these particular revenue points are going to be occurring. I think also that the economic development person indicates that it's a mischaracterization to say that that area over there is a warehouse district. She says that it's not. She says that it's a business park. Well, if you look at the MIF and their history of doing business, which, by the way, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, the developer made it a point of saying to everybody, "I build Class A industrial parks." I'm wondering what we're really looking at. It's unclear. Now, I believe that we need to have something over there, and it has to be really nice because it's a gateway to our home and it's a gateway to our city, but I want to understand what we're really buying here. And I don't think that the developer has been quite honest in understanding and explaining to us what he's bringing to the table. The last point I'd like to make is directed at the city attorney, and I believe that he might be able to answer that tonight, I hope, anyway. In looking at the Illinois statute, I did read it, I'm not a lawyer and I'm certainly not somebody that can discern all the intricacies of the law and all of the loopholes and all of the, you know, machinations that go with it. But if you look at the law, as I understand it, that you guys cite, which is that Illinois 1174, 4.4, subsection K talks about the creation of not less, a creation of a commission of not less than five nor more than 15 people that are appointed by the mayor and by the city council to talk and maintain that area in the TIF district. Now, I'm wondering how that comports with planning and zoning? How is this new commission that's in this law going to be affected by our own planning and zoning rules and regulations? I think the attorney might be able to explain that and how that all fits together, because I think that is a loophole that some people might be able to use, much like schools are not regulated by the International Building Code, right? They have their own building codes. So I'm wondering if we're creating our own little district out there that isn't going to be under the auspices of the planning and zoning? Because quite honestly, if you go to the planning and zoning meetings, which I do on a regular basis because I'm quite interested in this, they always seem to think that they're going to get a second bite of the apple, right? They passed the PUD at the last meeting, and now what they seem to think is that if the developer comes in and he puts in a new building, they'll be able to control that building and how much lighting is there, how much traffic is there, what the setbacks are going to be, how that is all going to be occurring. And quite honestly, if you, if I interpreted this K subsection, seems like they don't have to comport to our rules and regulations. Now, maybe the lawyer could explain how that doesn't occur, or it does occur, but I think it is something that we need to understand. Secondly, last point, I know I've talked on for a long time, second point I'd like to make is, also in that subsection, subsection O, there is also another advisory committee, how does that impact on us? So I think there's a bunch of questions that are left open, and I think it's important that we take the time to understand that, and I very much appreciate your time. I really do appreciate the effort that you folks put forth on our behalf, and I look forward to attending that June 3 meeting, and I really hope that city staff and lawyers and all those people that are affected by this will come and explain some of those points. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Carl Bocchi, I live on Lexington Drive in Geneva, and I'll make my comments brief. I just wanted to address some of the comments that came up from the MIF developers in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and they intimated that really, this whole project could not happen without the Couch Road extension, which, of course, that makes sense, right? How would they get trucks in and out of there without that Couch Road extension? Yet, as I was doing some investigation and research, I discovered that DuPage County, in addition to St. Charles and Geneva, had put forward a BUILD proposal, and BUILD is an acronym, which I can't remember exactly what it stands for, but it's funding that would go for infrastructure projects. And included in those projects were the Couch Road rebuild, which is getting started pretty soon, supposed to be done in '25, the Couch Road extension, so the .81-mile Couch Road extension, and then the widening of Fabian Parkway, essentially from the Business Park back to Route 38. So all of those projects were sort of rolled up into one big, and it was about a 28, 29 million dollar project. What I'm here to ask is, again, the builder intimated that, well, they couldn't do that without that Couch Road extension, and therefore, you know, we need the money through a TIF or some cooperation to have that happen, and I'm wondering what happened to that 2019 project to do the Couch Road extension and why that isn't happening independent of any other development, anything else? Because it seems to me that that whole area cannot be developed, to whatever, without the Couch Road extension. So why don't we just do the Couch Road extension and then look for partners and what TIF might be required to get people to come in there? So that was my question to this group as you're evaluating this going forward. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Maureen McKeo, 1568 Kirkwood Drive. There's a lot of complexity been mentioned and a lot of questions that aren't answered, and a lot of information about TIFs. Sometimes, when you've got that much complexity, it's helpful, at least as an exercise, to take a step back and treat it as a simple measure. So the first thing I want to ask you to do, not necessarily right now, is take a step back and just envision yourself. We're so grateful you do what you do, and think about yourself some years from now. How proud will you be of what's put on this property, of how it was financed? Will you drive by with grandchildren or whomever and say, you know, "I was a part of that, this is what we did"? Or will you not admit it? Or will there be something else that you can point to with pride? I think it's a good exercise. We're waiting 20 years to reap the rewards of what this will happen, so what will it look like in 10? I'd also like to suggest, aside from that, that the tax future, and people write about this with regard to TIFs, the tax future in 50 years, given the tumultuous times in which we live, is very hard to predict with any precision whatsoever. And that is what would pay the bonds, and that is what would increase the revenue to the city. So I think that is something to think about. Now, I know you know a lot about TIFs. I know you know they're an instrument created to promote economic development, especially in blighted areas. And blighted areas, to fit that definition, must meet five of 13 criteria spelled out in the legislation, at least five. And blighted areas are described as deteriorating red brick factory buildings, ports that are no longer in use, polluted sites that need to be cleaned up. Strange to think of Geneva having one of these blighted areas that would justify a I know that we know how they'll be paid, how the bonds will be paid, and that is from the incremental revenue. That's unsure, as I pointed out. What is absolutely sure is the bonds will be paid. And if the money is not there as tax revenue to pay them, it will fall to the city and therefore its citizens to pay those bonds. I won't be around in 20 years, I still care, and I bet you do too. I'd also like to say that a newsletter of the Illinois Baristas Association pointed out that the law has been written so broadly as to make it easy for municipalities and private entrepreneurs to stretch what is a blighted area. So we're not talking about anybody doing anything illegal, of course, but it is not, what is legal is not always terribly ethical. Now, no one here is claiming that there's undue pressure, or railroading, or backroom But the appearance of such things is as harmful as the reality. And it seems strange that this, that something that is this serious and that this many people want to comment on was on the omnibus agenda. And it seems strange that the review group that was supposed to review this proposal had no minutes, had a meeting at a time that was not terribly convenient, and as I understand it, no questions or one question was raised by that review board. That does seem strange, that casts an unfavorable appearance, it would seem to me. Another thing I'd like to think about, or I think about, is, somebody mentioned, it's important that this partnership be a private-public-city-entrepreneur partnership. You have to trust partners. In order to trust, you have to know partners. I have a modicum of distrust for someone who, in the face of what the residents wanted, cut down 300-year-old oak trees and released enormous carbon into our atmosphere and did not care, evidently, at least not enough to explain that kind of behavior. So I'd suggest that some due diligence might be due about our partnership with this developer. The other thing is that, one of the comments made about TIFs is that it's public dollars for private entrepreneurs. Why would a developer not be able to develop this and to raise equity money and have investors? Why would such a large amount of TIF money be needed for such a? So my question to you, therefore, is, when I asked the first thing, will this be something you can point to with pride and say, "I helped finance that, the decisions when I was on the council"? Or will it be something you look the other way about? This, oh, you don't know the answer to that, neither do I. What I want to know is, do you have enough information to predict what your answer to that would be? Given the questions that have been raised tonight, it seems to me that you don't. And the other thing, it seems to me, is there should not be such a rush. Anything this important and valuing millions of dollars requires very careful thought and examination, it seems, and some of the transparency that previous speakers have asked for. Thank you.
Brian Marr, 37-year resident of Geneva and Geneva Township. Thank you all for being here. Several speakers, there have been so many wonderful comments here about this, and considering the gravity and the size of this, I think slowing things down is not a terrible request. Several speakers ago, though, he brought up the concept of, but for this investment, this property will not be developed. And it sort of got me thinking that it had been in Louis' family, the Borg family, for, since the 40s, I believe it was, is when they purchased it. And it was farmed during that entire time, and unfortunately, he had to divest himself of that property in 2009 because of things that happened in the market. And that property was bought in 2009 by a developer who was planning on doing something to that property. And it didn't materialize, for whatever reason, I don't know the background of that, but in 2017, MIF bought it. And they have sat on it for the past seven years, because as we all know, that it has to be not farmed, fallow for at least five years, three of five, if I recall the TIF So by my calculations, but, I don't think there's been much effort to develop this property, it's been a very short window of time, it's not like it's been 20 years that staff has been trying to market this property for development. The last seven years don't count, because since MIF bought it, they weren't going to do anything with it. And the period of time before that is all that we have. So I understand the need for the road, we need some infrastructure so that it can be developed, but when I see some of these things that this 185 million could be used for, and one of them I found very surprising, it will pay up to 30% of their interest payments. I wish I could get a deal like that. So I guess what we're asking is, maybe slow the roll a little bit, let's at least let the people understand. If you all know about it, that's wonderful. And I will say that the JRB meeting was, quite frankly, it was insulting to those of us who were there. Kane County didn't show up, we had four members there, and it was not, it was not a very good performance by that group of people, I'll leave it at that. So with that being said, I hope you take your time to think about this well. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I do not want to be here. Everyone has spoken so eloquently, so much more eloquently than I can, but it is my civic duty to let you know that I was at that meeting, and yes, it was insulting. The consultant provided a document, which I am here to tell you is inaccurate. There are some things that I'm not as familiar with, but I know you are all professionals, some of you own your own businesses, and I'm sure that you double-check facts. Certainly, Alderman Mayor, you wouldn't build a building if there were some questions, if you had information that was questionable in your mind. you had information that was questionable in your mind. The photographs that were used to show that this area were blighted are questionable. And unfortunately, I cannot review them, because they are not available for me to review, which I don't consider transparency. And I know that this council likes to pride itself on transparency. I would like to review those. You know, and I'm in a design field where you can't trust photographs, anyway. It would be better if people went out and saw things for themselves. Now, I know you hired a consultant to come up with this documentation, and in their review, they are telling you, and you have accepted this as true, that this property has not been farmed. That's one of the stipulations, I understand, is it up being a TIF. And I am here to tell you that that property has been continually farmed with a harvesting as much as recently as last fall. Agricultural crops harvested, paid, you know, cash exchanged, money exchanged for profit. So, I believe that that document, in your due diligence and your service to this community, that really, that needs to be reviewed. And another, you know, agriculture has many names, farming has many names. The harvesting of timber for profit is also farming. You can call it logging, be that as it may. But it is a fact that that property has been farmed continually. Thank you.
Again, this is public comment. We invite anyone and everyone to share their thoughts with the council for our benefit of listening. New Business from the dais, anyone about anything? Alder Person Ruby.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on all the questions, comments, concerns, when, where, how can answers be communicated, or can a dialogue take place?
We'll be happy to provide the answers if they're not already provided within the reports. I'll work personally with City Commissioner Dawkins, Director Timoshenko, and the others. We will -- well, I'll leave it at that.
So, do they need -- do they need to take action, further action, or?
What further action are you recommending?
No, I'm asking if, I mean, did you take good notes of all their questions, or I'm just asking if they should follow up with anyone?
We have a live recording of this process.
Okay.
We will again review this process. Those questions that are germane to TIF 4 will be answered, absolutely. And I believe a lot of those questions have been answered already, but we will make certain that those are answered in such a way that could be shared, because everything is public. Despite the accusations of lack of transparency, there is transparency.
Okay. Well, I sympathize with the communication.
And there is a June 3 public hearing coming up, as you know.
Yes, I am aware of that, but it feels awfully late to be coming to the table with questions and concerns. You know, the residents are trying to be proactive and do their homework early, and the opportunities for them to do so are difficult.
We will turn around the information ASAP.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you. Anyone else? Alder Person Kilburg.
Changing the subject a little bit, I had the opportunity to participate in the mock city council meeting that was held here a couple of weeks ago, and Mr. McCready was the organizer, and we had about 20 students from Geneva High School that participated. It was an interesting afternoon, and it was a great exercise in giving young people an opportunity to meet elected officials, city staff, and to discuss topics that are relevant and issues that are currently on the table in front of the city of Geneva. So, again, I hope that we continue this program. I think it's beneficial, and it was a -- an afternoon that was well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Mayor.
I probably shouldn't say anything, but it's my third year anniversary for serving on this council, and I feel like some of the things said tonight leave a bad taste in my mouth that I want to speak about in general sense. Ever since I started on this council, questions that have been asked have been answered. Ever since I've been on this council, nobody's told me what to vote for, and every meeting has been conducted with good decorum, in my opinion. I'm not a puppet, I'm not anybody's -- I'm not being railroaded by anybody.
Just direct your comments to me, if you may.
Okay. So, as you know, we are not railroaded, we are not told what to say or do. I think that tonight's vote was a lot more thought than people would probably believe, but careful consideration by every member of this council that I've talked to has been reflected back to me in the three years that I've been on this board. So, I wanted to say that, because I think it's important to these high school students that are sitting here tonight to know that public service is important, and you shouldn't come in and berate people who are doing a civic duty. I think it's important to say that to young people and to everyone, that, you know, this is not an easy job, and we do spend hours and hours of our time looking at these proposals and considering what's best for this community. And I respect everybody at this table, because they've all been upfront and honest with me the whole time. Thank you all.
Anyone else in the business?
Clarification. Under public comment, it says that no discussion or debate will follow.
That's correct.
If the practice is that you can respond to public comment under new business, then I guess I wasn't aware of that, and if that's a precedent now, and again, I respect Alder Person Mayor's comments, but I think this is a deviation, since I was chastised previously for making a comment.
You made a comment regarding a pending lawsuit, and you were properly chastised.
I don't believe so. Could you cite that, Mayor?
Yes, you can. It was regarding a gentleman that's suing the city for a fallen tree. You wanted to ask the question, "What's the total cost?" That was an inappropriate question. Now, with respect to public comment.
So, I still have the floor, Mayor. In other words, so if I would have waited until new business, then it would have been appropriate? Is that the practice that we're going to follow then?
No, no, it's not, but it's a clever, clever question.
Why is it clever, Mayor?
I think it's just clever, that's all.
No, I'm --
But I have the floor now, Alder Person Kilburg. The reality is this, ladies and gentlemen, if under public comment, anyone can say anything they want to. I will not engage, no one else will engage. We used to do that, and we discovered that we went down not just a rabbit hole, but a whole red hole. And so, we thought, you know what, let's just ingest the information. If questions need to be answered, we'll provide that information accordingly. Under new business, you can say pretty much anything you want. That's why I asked Alder Person Mayor to direct her comments to me. So, I very much would love to respond to some of the commentary made tonight. I can fashion that under the auspices of new business, that I find it interesting that we are complimented for our good service, yet on Facebook posts, we're all a bunch of charlatans. Interesting, but not worthy of promoting tonight. So, with that said, no, we will not allow people to start going off and rambling and arguing to folks in the public. It's their chance to provide information, our chance to listen.
So, again, my simple question was, is it appropriate, then, to respond to public comments under new business?
You can respond to me, the chair.
Sure.
You cannot respond to the residents.
Well, I --
That's why I directed Alder Person.
That's right, that's appropriate, I understand that.
Absolutely.
But what you're saying, then, is that under new business, then, when we have public comments, we can respond through the chair as to questions or issues that may surface during the discussion?
If you so wish, sure. If you believe that's --
Okay, that is -- okay, that --
No, clarify, if you believe that is beneficial to the community, then by all means.
Okay.
If you waver from that, I mean, I think all of us could probably have a whole heck of a lot to say regarding some of the public comment tonight.
So, I just, again, it was a simple question.
It is a simple answer. The answer is yes.
Okay.
Now, every chair may act differently, and the council, at any time, or the committee of the whole, can overrule the chair, as you will know. Alder Person Maladra.
I'll weigh in on Alder Person Kilburg's comments. I believe Alder Person Mayor started out by saying, "I probably shouldn't say this." And I agree with that. I don't think you should have said this. Every one of us felt strongly about some things they heard tonight, and it takes a certain amount of discipline to just sit here quietly and take it. I think it would be a mistake to look at somebody giving into the heat of the moment as opening a door for somebody else to engage whenever they feel like it. I think I was tired of the rabbit warrants we dove into all too often. Our new approach to public comment works just fine the way it is. And so, I believe the answer to your question is, no, it's not appropriate. I believe you knew it wasn't appropriate. She's only been here three years, she's not as callous as I am, so she had a moment of weakness. That's the way it goes. Thank you.
Alder Person Bowery.
Since we're talking about this, I guess I'd like to note that, or I'd like to ask a question, actually. During public comment, I don't think we have provisions for exactly how those comments are directed. Are they intended to be directed toward the chair?
Yes.
Or are they allowed -- okay. So, I would like to request in the future that the chair interject if one of the sitting older persons or staff members are addressed directly. I think that does come across as hostile, and if we're going to have this policy where we don't engage, I'd just like to respectfully, I know that you, often you do, but just as a request to interject and request that they please address you instead. I'm sympathetic to Alder Person Mayor feeling like she had been personally attacked, because I think that is the, that is a perception I have as well. There were also, you know, perhaps some, some attacks levied against some of our staff persons, and while I don't want to squash the opportunity for the public to weigh in, I think it's appropriate for the chair to help ensure that people not be put in a position of feeling attacked, particularly when we're trying not to then further engage. Thank you.
To your point, Alder Person Bowery, all of you are very familiar, and certainly at the committee of the whole meetings, when all of you are chairing those meetings, oftentimes a preamble is presented with respect to how the meeting might be run that night. Those meetings are not different from any other meeting, but oftentimes, it's important to set out the rules of engagement, as it were. We all know, for example, coming up, we have several meetings that are likely filled with passion. Some of those meetings are not public hearings. Those are meetings. That means the public hearing has taken place at the Planning and Zoning Commission. That means that residents will not have the opportunity, or non-residents for that matter, not have the opportunity to address the council as the matter is being debated, because that is not what the statute calls for. So, those kind of preambles are important. And as all of you know, from chairing the committee of the whole meetings as well, sometimes a little bit of give is often good, and sometimes railing in is often perceived as exerting power we don't have. And how dare you quiet down anyone who wishes to address the committee and/or the council? So, I will accept the blame where the blame rests, I will endeavor to do better. I know all of you know full well what is and is not recommended, but again, the council has the ultimate authority. If you want to overrule the chair, you have the right to do so. New Business, anyone else? How about a motion to adjourn the city council meeting? Motion by, oh, Kocarag. All in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Were adjourned, will take just a moment to transfer to the committee of the whole meeting, being chaired by Alder Person Mayor.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's committee of the whole meeting, May 6. Let it be known that there's one Alder Person absent. Do you need a full roll call?
Nope.
I am Amy Mayer, I'm the Alder Person of the 4th Ward, along with my co-Alder Person, Martha Pashke, and I'll be chairing tonight's meeting. The first order of business is to approve committee of the whole minutes from April 15.
So moved.
Second.
Kocarag and, oh, not even being fair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next order of business, 3A, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a license agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institutes Incorporated for geographic information systems program in the amount of $29,300.
So moved.
Second.
Bowery and Bruno.
City manager, not city mayor, Dawkins.
The fiscal year '25 budget has funds allocated to renew the enterprise license agreement for the city's geographic information systems, also known as GIS. The ELA provides expanded capabilities to city staff, such as increasing number of users, utility network models, and analysis tools. The agreement is for a three-year period with an annual cost of $29,300. And if you have any additional questions or comments, we do have with us this evening newly-promoted GIS coordinator, Zabel, and then we also have Director Babica with us as well.
Does anyone have any questions for Zabel or Director Babica? Dean?
Yep. The city's geographic information systems, I think, are a powerful tool. If any of you have not had an opportunity to see these demonstrated, I highly recommend taking some time and seeing how they're being utilized by the city. So, I think this is a great expenditure and one that's going to get a lot of use by the city moving forward.
Thank you, Dean. I think you're right about that. It's a great system that we have. Is anyone else having comments or questions? Seeing none, sensing none, roll call?
Voice vote?
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? All right. Item 3B, consider draft resolution authorizing the annual purchase of transformers and materials from Wesco through Sourcewell contract in the amount of $560,000.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Stephanie?
So, electrical equipment and transformers are available through Sourcewell, and you may recall that's a competitively bid purchasing cooperative for government and nonprofit entities, and this is under a contract awarded to Wesco. The transformers and materials meet the city's specifications and Department of Energy efficiency standards. With us this evening for additional questions or comments is our superintendent, Erin
Anyone have any questions? Dean?
Yeah. Good. Erin, possibly tell us, will some of this equipment be utilized in the southeast industrial park at all, or is that so far out that all this equipment will probably be utilized in the existing city with, addressing current city needs?
No, none of this will be used for the southeast development.
Okay.
It's just for our stock and usage.
What's the lead time now on transformers?
Two years and counting.
Wow.
It's not getting any better.
Have you gotten any since the?
We have, we have had a few show up. It's been exciting. But, yeah, if you order a large three-phase transformer right now, it's, it's two years, 106 weeks.
Holy moly. All right, thank you. Should we do a voice vote? Voice vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, unanimous? All right. Item 3C, consider draft resolution accepting a professional services agreement with Stanley Consultants for Design Services for Bullock Campus Electrical Infrastructure Construction in an amount not to exceed $307,469, pending legal review. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Marx and Bruno. Marx and Bruno.
Okay, so, the electric division has identified capacity needs for the area that will be the Bullock Campus. To meet the electric energy and service needs of this area, the division needs to construct a new substation and feeders. We do not have the expertise to undertake the design portion for the substation, and so the recommendation is to employ Stanley Consultants for Design Services. Stanley Consultants has performed these services for the city in the past and their work has been acceptable on time and on budget. And again, if you have additional questions with us still, it's Superintendent Holton.
Does anyone have any questions? Don't sense any, so let's take a roll call for, just to keep you-
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item 3D, consider draft resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with All American Exterior Solutions for Fire Station Number One Roof Replacement in an amount not to exceed $98,593. Bowery and Pashke, thank you.
Okay, so, Fire Station One was built in 2002 and the shingle roof is nearing the end of its useful life. A public bid was held to replace the entire shingle roof system with 10 firms responding. The lowest responsible bid was from All American Exterior Solutions for $89,630. All American Exterior Solutions has been interviewed and confirmed, understanding the scope of work, provided extensive references for public sector shingle roof replacements, which were validated. With us this evening, we do have our facilities manager, Pete Adams. And I would note, so the not to exceed amount includes that 10% contingency amount. Yeah, so, the, the number I read in mine was the actual bid with the 10% not contingency. It comes to $98,593.
Any questions? Comments? Dean?
Yes, I guess normally roof, we, when we're looking at a roof, we're usually talking about something between probably 18 to 24 years, life expectancy of a roof. And Fire Station One was built in 2002?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're about 22 years out. What, what's your assessment of the roof currently? Are we experiencing any leaks or are we having any deterioration? Or are we shedding a lot of, a lot of the gravel or the, the sand associated with the shingles? How are we, how do, is it just a case of where we feel it's time to replace it before we have leaks or?
It's typical deterioration you'd see for a 20-plus-year-old roof. It's definitely showing the signs of its age and it's there.
No leaks, so.
None, no major ones that I'm aware of.
The chief is banging the difference.
The chief backs to differ, is right.
Okay.
Okay, well.
I guess I'm not hearing enough complaining.
Oh, you're not there when it comes to. It's been leaking quite a bit.
Oh, well, sorry. It's been leaking quite a bit on the major rainstorms in the apparatus floor and other areas, so it's showing its age.
Yeah. That's good to know.
Yeah.
But it needs to be replaced.
It does.
Okay. It's not a case where we could delay or wait another year or two?
No, it's leaking on the rigs and it's, we're worried it's going to start moving over into office spaces.
I agree.
Office spaces.
And then, you know, roofs play an important part in the, the, the security of the building and we have a lot of equipment that's stored there.
Yeah.
And then, I'll interject here. Have, have we done anything at all to try and determine what the cost to replace the roof on the city-owned barn on a peck road yet? Have we looked into that? And again, that's just a point of information.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's not on the agenda right now, so-
Well, I understand.
Bring it up under new business.
Well, we're talking about roofs, I thought I'd ask.
The appropriate place would be under new business.
Okay, I'll do that then. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions about this? Sensing none, voice vote? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It carries unanimously. Let's see, we're on E. 3E, consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of a fire station alerting system for fire stations number one and two from U.S. Digital and Digicom Inc. in the amount of $155,041.41.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike and Bowery.
Okay, so, the current fire station alerting systems are very old, 30 to 40 years. They're obsolete and no longer can we get the expertise or parts available to service the systems. The proposed purchase will result in a modern digital system that integrates into the upgraded Tricom dispatch system. Benefits of the new system are increased reliability, improved employee wellness, decreased turnout time, and increased situational awareness. U.S. Digital Designs, which is the hardware component, and Digicom Inc. is the installation and programming, provided the lowest-cost solution, as stated in the amount of $155,041.41. With us this evening, we do have Chief Antonori and Deputy Chief Los, who can answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have questions for the chief? Okay. Shall we go right to vote then? Voice, voice votes, okay, I believe? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, I think that takes us to the last item, 3F. Consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of a source capture vehicle exhaust system for fire stations number one and two from Hastings Air Energy Control, Inc. in the amount of $171,505. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Marx and Kassarag.
Okay, so, the proposed purchase is for a vehicle exhaust source capture system. It's the best available technology to collect diesel and gasoline engine exhaust from the tailpipe to ensure 100% of toxins are removed safely and efficiently. Ply movement provided the lowest cost and best technology solution. Hastings Air Energy Control, Inc. is the exclusive dealer for this geography. The total recommended project cost is $171,505 for both fire stations. And again, same individuals are available, Chief Antonori and Deputy Chief Los.
Anyone have any questions? Dean?
I had a couple of questions in regard to the system. Thanks for being here tonight, chief.
Thank you for having me.
The way I understand it, the way this, we, we have an existing system, right?
Yes.
And is that simply a system that would be similar to, for instance, what you might find at a, a garage where they essentially, essentially hook a hose to the, the tailpipe and then it's vented to the, the outside?
The new system would have that, right?
Pardon me?
The new system would have the hose and the tailpipe.
Okay, now, when they say capture, is it, is, is it really capturing the, you refer to it as the, the, the toxins essentially that are generated from diesel?
Correct.
Now, it, it looks like, looking at the diagrams in the packet, it looks like essentially it vents up and then out?
Yes, so, kind of imagine it, it goes on the tailpipe.
Sure.
Holds on by magnet, there's a rail. So, when you start the engine, all the exhaust goes into there instead of out in the open. As you leave the station, just as it hits the doorframe, it disconnects and, and the tailpipe's now outside instead of inside. So, it, it takes you from start to outside. And when you get in, they get out, hook it on before they drive in. So, when they come in, they don't bring in any exhaust. So, it's both directions.
The, the previous system that we had was essentially what you might find at a garage or where you get your oil change.
A big fan in the ceiling and it just sucked it up.
Well, it, it actually drew it? And this system will draw it too?
This system will draw it, but the other one would go right by you. So, there was nothing containing it. So, it would just go, it'll get in the open air and then it would suck it out eventually in a couple of minutes. So, we're exposing ourselves to-
Okay.
-tailpipe exhaust on a regular basis.
So, these diesel fumes, are they, they're pretty toxic, aren't they?
Well, firefighters in general, more than the general public are exposed to all types of toxins and carcinogens. So, we spent a lot of time the last five to eight years removing where we can controlled exposures. We can't control what we do for a living where it's toxic, but we would certainly do it back at the station, so.
So, these are being admitted into the atmosphere?
In the station and it's breathed in and over-
So, like, they'll drift like a block north, possibly?
Um, you know, no different than the current system. It's expelled and it's up in the air and it's in the background with all the other trucks and cars driving around the neighborhood.
But trucks that are using diesel in-
And gasoline, yeah.
If we could minimize those, it'd probably be good for the environment.
If you could, but not my department on that one.
Oh. That's all I had. Thanks, chief.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief. That was a really good, good explanation and, you know, I think indoor air quality for the people that work for our fire department is a huge priority and it's great that you guys are tackling that.
Thank you.
Awesome. So, oh, Alderman, Ruby.
Thank you. Thanks for your explanation. It makes a little bit more sense to me now.
I am just curious about, and I, I did ask in advance, but this part of my question
didn't get addressed. I'm just concerned about the proximity of the fire station to Harrison Street School. Do you know any, do you have any information on particulates per molecule, anything like that?
Not, not at this point. Harrison Street School's 500 feet from the station, it's also 500 feet from Route 38.
Yeah.
And again, we're background to whatever else is happening in the neighborhood. You know, the number of trucks that drive by, the number of cars, the number of school buses that are diesel, that pull up to school are all part of that mixture.
Yeah. Are there any other options for the capture that, that don't exhaust out, just outside of the building? Are there any other, I'm sure they would be much more expensive, but does it even exist?
Um, we looked at, there are other options, but they all do the same thing, they expel to the environment. Yeah.
Okay, so, all right.
Yeah, so, yeah, we've looked at four or five different bit of technologies and at the end of the day, the, the reason for these technologies is not to capture it for the environment, is to get them away from the-
To protect the workers, sure.
People. So, that's where all the effort is, is to remove them from the folks that breathe them in during the day-to-day operations. And they're not to capture and, and containerize them, to take them away somehow. That, that's beyond what we've looked at.
Okay.
Even if it was available.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yep, thank you.
Sure.
Alder Person Kassarag.
I would just say, you're not increasing or decreasing the amount of fumes. I mean, it was just going through the roof versus going out the pipe. So, not that we shouldn't be careful of elementary schools around us, but we're not increasing the amount of-
No, no. It's the same amount that was before. And, you know, put in perspective, we bought, you have graciously funded over the last five years, two new pieces of apparatus. They both have cleaner burning diesels than the ones we replaced. So, in effect, we have been reducing the number of carbon particles that we've been putting out just by normal replacement with clean, cleaner burning diesels, diesel fluid type engines that cut down on that.
Yeah, much appreciated.
Sure.
Thank you.
And just to follow up, is, is there any possibility of decreasing the amount of time the engine is running before it leaves the station?
We have already instituted, we do not start the engine until the doors are open, the doors are closed on the rig, and it's ready to go. So, it's turned on, put in the gear and leaves.
So, it emits that much?
Less.
Well, okay.
Yeah. No, we, we've done everything we can to eliminate the amount of reproducing.
Sure, sure.
And so, it's no longer start it up and let run.
Mm-hmm.
They've been taught to, the door comes open, the doors are closed, everybody's seatbelts on, then they fire it up. And that's probably reduced it significantly for the years past.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thanks again, chief.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for the chief? Let's take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed. All right, we are moving on to public comment.
Let's try that again. Public comment, yeah.
Yeah, less public comment. When recognized by the chair, proceed to the podium, state your name for the record and provide your public comments. Please understand that this is your time to be heard and the public body's time to listen. No discussion or debate will follow. Does anyone here like to speak for a public comment? Okay, all right.